This is a rowdy bunch tonight. I like it. Okay, I would like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council on Monday, May 13th at 7:00. Will our city recorder please call roll?
Councilor Gustafson?
Absent, excuse.
Council President Rippey?
Here.
Councilor Martinez?
Here.
Councilor Marshall?
Here.
Councilor Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilor Ewing?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tuolton Kalapuas, who call themselves the Apaladi. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Rock. Will the audience in the council please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you. Okay, testing, that's much better. So let's... All right. I'm Nikki Iverson. I'm the Water Director for City of Hillsborough. I also serve as General Manager for the Joint Water Commission. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the history and Carl Heisler's support of our organization. In 1976, the City of Hillsborough and Forest Grove joined forces to form a new agency called the Joint Water Commission, or JWC. Together, they built a jointly owned water treatment plant. An inaugural board of commissioners was chosen to oversee the JWC organization. And Carl Heisler was one of the three commissioners appointed by Forest Grove. Now, only 48 years later, Commissioner Carl Heisler is stepping down as JWC's longest-serving commissioner. Over the last 48 years, the agency added additional partners, including the City of Beaverton and Tuolton Valley Water District, and additional infrastructure to create a regional water system. The original water treatment plant was built to treat 20 million gallons of drinking water per day, and throughout Commissioner Heisler's tenure, was expanded to its current capacity of treating up to 85 million gallons per day. He is the only commissioner who provided oversight for construction of both reservoirs on Fern Hill, the first in 1981, which was expedited as crucial infrastructure after Mount St. Helens erupted. There have been many other projects along the way as well, which have taken the JWC from supplying water to about 30,000 customers in Hillsborough and Forest Grove, to today supplying most of Western Washington County and over 450,000 customers. We at the JWC appreciate your above and beyond years of public service, your steady hand on the JWC tiller that has guided the organization for almost 50 years, from inception to where it is today, and your dedication to an essential service that provides high-quality drinking water, fire protection, economic support, and quality of life for so many. Thank you for your service.
Get into heaven.
Stay up here, stay up here. The city has some words.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The Joint Water Commission was originally formed to provide high-quality drinking water to the rapidly growing urban area west of Portland. Forest Grove, Hillsborough, Beaverton, and the Tuolton Valley Water District joined forces in the effort. Today, the JWC serves nearly half a million residents and businesses with one of the fundamental essentials necessary to support a high quality of life. From the humble beginnings that eventually became the JWC, Carl Heisler has represented Forest Grove. He has done so in a thoughtful and professional manner, always prepared, was an effective advocate for the residents and businesses of Forest Grove. On behalf of the city and as mayor, I wish to thank you for your 47, maybe 48, depending on who does the math, years of service representing the city on this extremely important commission. Your efforts have helped grow Forest Grove to the community it is now. Well done. Thank you.
Matt, where are you?
Yeah, okay. Can't stay up here. So when you serve for 48 years, you go through a few mayors. So at this point, I would like to invite our former mayors, Richard Kidd and Peter Truax, to the podium to say some words for Carl. Testing, testing. We're going to switch back. Yeah, right.
There are introductions, and then there are introductions. Thank you, Carl. Madam Mayor, members of the Forest Grove City Council, and guests. Indeed a pleasure to be here tonight to see the honor bestowed upon Carl. A lifelong resident of the area, he has given far more to the community than whatever we could repay him with. So over 40 years of serving on the Joint Water Commission's Board of Directors is only a small part of his civic contribution. Now, I'm going to be saying some things that you've heard before this evening, but bear with me, I didn't have time to scratch them out. He was a standout student-athlete at Forest Grove High School, excelling in such a way that he was a member of the inaugural class of the Forest Grove High School Hall of Fame. After spending some time in limbo, or in that black hole we call Linfield College, he returned to the Grove to embark on a career of giving and of service to this community. His church, the Forest Grove Chamber of Commerce, Forest Grove Rotary, and others all benefited from his service and his intelligence, as did the City of Forest Grove through his contributions such as the JWC. As you've heard, Joint Water Commission is one of those forward-thinking creations that Western Washington County in general, and Forest Grove in particular, is well-known for. With the construction of Skoggan Dam and the attendant creation of Hag Lake, there needed to be a local presence in how that water would be managed for the good of all. Forest Grove, along with the cities of Hillsborough and Beaverton and the Tuolton Valley Water District, joined forces to help the Bureau of Reclamation manage that source of water that not only provided water, but reduced much of the flooding that had been annual occurrences in the Tuolton Basin. Carl played a significant role in all of that and in the commission and the various changes it went through to meet the growing needs of growing communities. You only need to glance at the changes that it made to improve water storage, water purification, and water distribution to understand the contributions of people such as Carl and his perennial partner in crime, Rod Feet. So to Mr. Heisler, the only thing that Richard and I can add is thank you, thank you, thank you. I've never had this opportunity to go after these two. And that one, I saw that they were actually going to talk. I thought, oh, shucks. I'm not sure about it, but you got to understand, when this started, I was just coming off of being on the council like the rest of them here. And I know they told me that we had to plan for 50 years. This is, God, I can't even think that far. And now I'm almost lived that whole 50 years. But I think we are proud of the fact that we have one of the best water systems, the best congregation of three or four cities and stuff, and we're doing what is right. And we're actually giving you water that's cheaper than the rest of the world around us. And it's very, very good. So I'm proud of that. Somebody else has to live the 50 years that I'm close to living right now. I'm not sure, you know, there's only one other person I've been around long enough, and that's my wife. September 4th, we get to celebrate 60 years. And he talked about Linfield, and they had a raffle down there when we got married. We wouldn't make it one year. So we beat that one too. But I'm very, very proud, one, of the City of Forest Grove, two, that was able to help a little bit. So thank you very much.
He likes to gift him. Makes him feel better, Carl. Okay, our next award this evening is the Eric G. Stewart Award. If I can have members of the HLB come up, and also American Legion Post II, who is receiving the award, that would be amazing. So if I could have American Legion come up and HLB, please? Do you want to? Don't mean to read? Okay. Okay, yeah. So I have the two. Is that fine?
Yeah, you tell me when. Evening. The Eric G. Stewart Award is hereby awarded to the American Legion Post II in recognition of its enduring persistence to Forest Grove's historical heritage and community involvement. The Forest Grove Historic Landmarks Board has chosen to bestow the 2024 Eric G. Stewart Award to Washington Post II of the American Legion. The Legion chartered in 1919, and its membership have been part of the Forest Grove community for more than a century, and have been outstanding stewards of their post building, which has become a Main Street landmark. Their constant care, beginning with the building upon the ashes of a Main Street, of the former Odd Fellows Hall, to recent building system upgrade, while maintaining the architectural heritage of their building, make Washington Post II worthy of this award. The American Legion Hall has always been home to Post II, but it has also served as a community well. The Elks and several churches have enjoyed use of the building. Mid-century, saw many changes, saw many dances after football games. Currently, Boy Scout Troop 2060 and Regeneration Dance Students ensure that young, exuberant voices, along with the old tales of military life, will continue to echo through the chambers of this historic building. We are proud to present to the American Legion, Washington Post II, this year's Eric Stewart Award. Current Legion Post II Commander Lynn Teague will accept this award. We thank you.
I'm not much on speeches, but I accept this on behalf of the members of our post and the members, ladies and gentlemen, that have come before us over the past 100-plus years. And we wish to pass it on to those who follow us in even better condition than you see it today. Thank you for this award.
The way this award works is that we've added your name onto our running list of previous winners, and it's displayed in the community auditorium. So you actually don't get to take an award home, but we have it here for you. And a nice certificate. Thank you. I'm going to do the proclamation, and then I'll allow a short little break for people to leave if they would like to. So the next item on our agenda is our proclamation. It is National Preservation Month, May 2024. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation created Preservation Month to spotlight grassroots preservation efforts in America. And whereas Preservation Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the diverse and unique heritage of our country, cities, and states, enable more Americans to become involved in the preservation movement. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as National Preservation Month in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people of Forest Grove to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in the special observance. Thank you. Okay, so as I make my way back to the dais, if you would like to leave at this point, because you are here for Carl and the American Legion, I totally understand. Thank you, and congratulations to our award winners. I'm a problem solver. It's a teacher in me. Okay, we're going to move on to Item B on our agenda, which is Public Comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the City Council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda, but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority of councilors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. Our first public comment is Diane Standing. Can you please come to the microphone in the front of the room? Hello, yeah. And then we'll, I think you might just, I think that's fine, right there. Go for it, yeah. Yeah, however you're comfortable, yes.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Councilmen, for letting me speak tonight. My name is Diane Standen. I belong to the American Legion Auxiliary Post II. I am poppy chairman for our unit and poppy chairman for the state of Oregon. A little bit of background, connecting the visual image of the poppy with the sacrifice of service made by our veterans has been an important goal of the American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Program. Since its inception in 1921, on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, millions of red crayon poppies are handmade by veterans as part of their therapeutic rehabilitation across the country in exchange for the donations that go directly to assist disabled and hospitalized veterans in our community. The American Legion family recognizes the importance of honoring the fallen and supporting the living who have mourned our nation's uniform. That is why the American Legion family called upon Congress to designate the Friday before Memorial Day as National Poppy Day. National Poppy Day broadens the tradition that dates back to the American Legion's Auxiliary First National Convention in 1920, when the red poppy was adopted as the American Legion's family memorial flower. Today, it remains an iconic symbol of the honor, the sacrifice that our veterans make. American Legion Auxiliary members distribute millions of poppies annually across the country in exchange for donations that go directly to assist the disabled and hospitalized veterans in our communities. That in the spring of 1919, amid complete devastation, the poppies bloomed in abundance on the battlefields of France, where so many of our men had fallen in battle. And that a replica of this poppy has become the memorial flower of the American Legion Auxiliary. The American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy, pledged 100% of the profit from the poppy distribution to the welfare relief of all servicemen, servicewomen, and their families, fulfilling the true meaning of the poppy, an emblem of faith, faith which is being kept with all who die through service to the living. The American Legion Auxiliary, in order to protect the memorial poppy from inland of commercialism, adopted a national poppy program at the St. Paul Convention in 1924, which eliminated the commercial poppy. The memorial poppies are made of red crayon paper by hand and put together by veterans in hospitals and poppy workrooms in 40 states. And that the workers receive pay for each poppy made, and these workers are veterans. The material being furnished to them by the Department of the State which the hospital is located. I guess I'm here to say that I was very disappointed when I received the email stating that you would not be signing our proclamation. We are not asking for National Poppy Day. We are asking as the town of Forest Grove to recognize, be aware why we distribute poppies in front of our local grocery store safe. For many years, Safeway has welcomed us there, and the people of Forest Grove are so generous. Our Legion members come with us because the people and other veterans want to talk to us. And we listen because that is important for our veterans to know that we care. We are acknowledging the importance of that day, and would like to have Poppy Day in Forest Grove, May 27, 2024. This is the day that the American Legion does the memorial service to recognize the men and women that we have lost.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to give public comment? Seeing none. We will now move on to Item C, which is our Consent Agenda. Items under the Consent Agenda are now considered routine and will be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councilors who wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
So moved.
The Consent Agenda was moved by Councilor Ewing and seconded by Councilor Marshall. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the Consent Agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council on a vote of six to zero. Item D on the agenda, additions or deletions. City Manager, do you have any additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome. Any Item 2 or D2, any proposed by council? Seeing none. We will move on to Item E, which is Presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Item, or the first presentation on the agenda is Historic Landmarks Board Annual Update, and we have the HLB Chair, Jennifer Brent, to present, along with Staff Community Development Director, Brian Polk, and George Quichy.
I didn't time it. Thank you for this opportunity to share our achievements with you. SHPO and you asked us to have educational outreach. And so last year, we had an historic windows workshop. We had restoration specialist Joy Sears of the Oregon Parks and Rec Department, Heritage Division of State Historic Preservation Office, otherwise known as SHPO. And she presented a well-attended community event to educate the public about the beauty and the craftsmanship of the original windows in the historic homes. The information session was conducted in a hybrid classroom format, first presenting in classroom and then with hands-on. One of our biggest conflicts is about the replacing old windows with vinyl windows. So we hope that this new knowledge that we shared will help the owners love their houses more. We should probably do this every five years for all the new homeowners in the ensuing time. We also had our first demolition review. Over the years, we've been practicing for this so we could get it right. Thank you, Brian. The board reviewed the demolition request to allow the clearing of an uninhabitable, vegetatively overgrown neighborhood light home located in the Clark District that has been vacant for years. We were all sad the house had come to this stage, but we were happy to know that our architectural standards and guidelines will help the contractor replace the eyesore with a building or a building or home in keeping with that neighborhood. Last month, SHIPO had Oregon Heritage Conference here in our very own town of Forest Grove. The conference is a time for people who share a common passion for Oregon's heritage and history to come together to share insights, understand connections, develop relationships, learn new ways, and reinforce the value of work and energize to keep moving forward. Board Secretary George Quishy held a place on a panel discussion entitled "Spanish Language as a Way to Increase Community Engagement," and shared with the board what the board has done to engage the local Spanish-speaking community in the preservation of our homes. We have had Spanish translations of the historic district brochures, and when we prepared the banners for our window replacement, we also had them in Spanish so that we would have anybody, we could include anyone that wanted to be. That said, we are leveraging all that George has been learning at these events to thank our diligent and loving homeowners. We are having a half-day community engagement and education session. It's tentatively scheduled for Saturday, but we are researching and recruiting of August, sorry, speakers to present a number of topics ranging from Historic Grant Writing 101, restoration practices for working licensed contractors, the role of oral history in historic preservation advocacy and engagement for heritage. And at this event, I hope they get to share their love of old houses with each other, have themselves on the path for helping make Forest Grove a special place. That's all? Did I get it done in time?
Yeah, you did. Great.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Questions for HLB? Any questions, clarifying comments? Councillor Ewing?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. Thank you, you guys, for coming this evening. It's always been a reward to work with you through the years and to be able to see really the contributions that your team has made and for the community. I just really want to extend my appreciation and job well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ewing.
Thank you, Brian, for holding your hand.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to a presentation from SSW Consulting about our Forest Grove 2040 Visioning Plan. Hello, Sarah. Can you hear us?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you well.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm going to share with you an overview of the 2040 vision process. And looks like they're pulling up the slides now. We wanted to be able to introduce the council to this process and in our plan for moving forward. So if we can head to the next slide. Our team was really excited to be selected for working with the city of Forest Grove. We have a longstanding relationship with you all, having worked on the, your goal-setting retreats and talking about the community vision. I think the conversation started about four years ago when we were working on a community profile, when we were doing some goal-setting in 2020. So it's exciting to see this process come to fruition, and we're really thrilled to get started on it. That's our team. You guys have met Ashley and Sasha. And for those who aren't familiar with our work in the community, we do strategic planning, that is uniting people towards a shared vision. And then the most important part of that work is the facilitation aspect of it and the engagement, which you'll see in the community vision and work, which is about fostering the relationships that really helps to get the work done. And so there'll be lots of engagement that goes into this process, and we'll talk more about that in a moment. Next slide. This is all about setting goals for your community, and I love this quote to kind of get us in the right frame of mind, that goals, there's no telling what you can do when you get inspired by them, and there's no telling what you can do when you believe in them, and no telling what will happen when you act on them. And so it's just really powerful to see the communities who can form shared goals together and then really push them forward to do what's best for their community. So looking forward to see what that is for Forest Grove as we look towards your vision and the goals to help us get there. So community visioning, you guys are no stranger to goal-setting, certainly, but community visioning is a little bit different. It's about defining goals and actions, of course, and doing that in alignment with the mission and values, but it's even more important to the engagement that goes into the process, as I mentioned earlier. So the community engagement and engagement with staff will help to result in unity around that mission, vision, values, and goals. It'll ensure through engagement and those conversations across the community and the organization that we're gathering that input to develop shared goals and through that collaborative discussion, as well as a plan for how to get there. It's also really important in community visioning and working with your organization and your other community stakeholders to see what are the various plans that are guiding the, that are guiding the organization as well as the community, and trying to discern where the alignment is between those plans. That work doesn't stop just because you're developing a community vision. The community vision really helps to bring those plans together. And then again, through that engagement, the most important piece of that is building relationships that's gonna help yield those implementation results for your community. It's relationships, existing relationships, strengthening those, and then also thinking about what stakeholders maybe haven't we engaged enough in the past, or what new stakeholders are in the community, and how do we form some really solid relationships with them to bring them into the visioning and goal-setting as well. In our next slide, so it's more about, it's more than just creating a plan. This is really about creating a culture, something, it's not just a one-and-done thing. Again, in building that relationships, it's about keeping people engaged, ensuring that the plan is relevant as things change. We'll have a plan for regularly updating it, and then also plans for communicating consistently and often with the folks that we engage. And then most importantly, as you get in towards implementation, highlighting what's been accomplished, where we might be running into challenges, celebrating the progress, and where there are challenges, figuring out how to work through those together. So it's really about creating that culture of strategic management and a nimble plan and flexible plan that's going to evolve and be updated as you move through the implementation process. Next slide. So some of the project objectives that we've designed to get us started is we want to identify community vision and values that reflects Forest Grove, the character of your community. So thinking through the things that matter most to folks who live, work, and play and visit in Forest Grove. The visioning process is going to lay the groundwork, as I mentioned, for the public engagement. So we'll work with staff, we'll work with volunteers, your boards, your commissions, and develop goals for the engagement process, and then a strategy to engage the broader community. Once we get into the engagement, we will start analyzing the results that come out of any focus groups, surveys, and other engagement that we do to look at current trends and be able to think through, you know, what are some of those potential impacts, constraints, opportunities? We'll start to see what sort of themes emerge. We'll outline that vision for the, for the community through our engagement, and then start to develop the actions that will help to move us towards that vision. And then most importantly, at the end, outlining an implementation structure that's going to define how do we, how do we document the progress? How do we report it back to the community? And then how do we use additional input to update the vision, again, to make sure that we support a culture of strategic management and that it's a living document that's gonna continue to guide the community and the organization? So those are the goals that we've outlined. As far as how we're going to get there, this is our process overview. So right now, we're kind of in between that stage one and two, working through our scoping and planning. We've been going through some background materials. We've geared up some recruitment materials for a steering committee that will help to work on this project. And then the next phase of the project will be to work through our engagement strategy and put that together. So we're updating that community profile from 2020, designing a stakeholder map, so just thinking through who are all the stakeholders in Forest Grove. We're working on some project branding, key messages, so just getting some key materials put together. And then we'll be working with the steering committee on the development of that communications and engagement plan that's gonna dictate how we do the engagement with the community. And then once we have our plan solidified, we will get out and start that engagement work. So you'll see us all over the place, in meetings, at events, some one-on-one interviews, and we'll be using a variety of tools to engage the community. And throughout that, as I mentioned, there'll be a steering committee that we'll be checking in with to help guide that work and make sure that there's, there aren't any gaps in our engagement, or see if we, if we need to evolve our tools to make sure that we truly are reaching everybody. There'll also be some checkpoints with the city council. So when we get into this next phase for our vision development, we'll be sharing the results of that outreach to the council and then also presenting a draft of the mission and vision and values. Once we've, we have our mission, vision, values put together, we'll start looking through the action planning. And that will be some vision lab focus groups, working with, again, some folks from the community, some subject matter experts from staff, and thinking through, once we have our mission, vision, values, and goals, what are the actions going to be to support those goal areas? Lots of public involvement in every phase of this process, but as we get those plans put together, we'll be circulating that with the community for public comment, presenting it to the council, the steering committee, and making sure that we're closing the communication engagement loop with all the stakeholders. We'll finalize that vision and action plan, and then step seven will be to implement and celebrate it. So this is a really important part of the process that not every community works through, and we want to make sure that we set Forest Grove up for success. So it's, it's not enough just to have the plan, but also to have an implementation structure that's going to help you bring the plan to life. So we'll be working with your staff on some training templates and materials, some progress reporting tools, and make sure that they're truly ready to launch the vision and feel supported in that process. This doesn't happen alone. It's a team effort. So we have some, outline some roles and responsibilities for the groups that will be very involved in moving this project forward. So council, let's focus on your role for a moment. You guys will be receiving quarterly updates on the process. We'll be very engaged in the development of the mission, vision, and values. That community vision, the idea will be to link that to the council's annual goal-setting process. And then you guys are the champions for this project. This is something that you've been talking about for quite some time. So we want you to be engaged and involved and really encourage the community, just the broader community and through your own personal networks to get involved in this process. Jesse Vanderzinn, your city manager, serving as the project sponsor, he'll be working with us to identify, you know, needs, problems, opportunities, make sure all the work continues to be viable, also a project champion to help keep it front and center. Stephanie Fleischer, the project manager, she's working closely with our team and overseeing all the details and the project management and bringing those decision points back, helping facilitate the updates to the council. Our team, Ashley, Sasha, and myself will be working with all of you, planning, organizing, doing the data research, the outreach, the, developing the outreach strategies as well as conducting the outreach and then putting those plans together. And then the steering committee will be an important part of this work as well. So community volunteers representing different stakeholder groups, they'll be advisory to staff, they'll help to guide that visioning process, they'll also be able to participate in the engagement opportunities, and will be an important group to help review all of the deliverables to make sure that we're staying on track and that it's, that the work is representative of what the community is actually sharing with us. Next slide. So that's an overview of the process, and it's not too early to help, to help just jump right in and get started. So the thing, as you saw in the process, we're gearing up for some engagement. So we'd love to give the council a little bit of homework if you, if you would indulge us. We have an existing list serve from your livability survey that has about 150 people, and some custom links have been identified for each of you to help us build on that list. Again, engagement, to have a really
Technology.
Reflective, we need to engage with everybody and all of these different groups. So council can help us build that list. So we're going to share some links with you that you can share out with your networks in the community and encourage them just to get signed up. Let them know the vision work is coming, and there's going to be lots of opportunities to get involved and to sign up to make sure that they are aware of those opportunities. So those links will be shared with you. We could even make it a friendly competition between the council. You all have your custom links, so we can keep you updated on, on where we're seeing the most traffic and make it a friendly competition if you'd like. Maybe there'll be some prizes for, for the councillor who helps us get the most signups. So it's all in good fun to help us build engagement and support for the vision so that we hear from everybody in the community in this process. Right, next slide. So I just wanted to provide an opportunity for any questions that the council might have as we get started on this visioning process and ready to take those questions now.
Any questions? I'll start while. Sarah, thank you so much. I'm so excited to be working with you all in this capacity. It's a long time coming. And I was, the teacher in me was super stoked when I saw homework, and then I had the idea for a little competition, like, and then when you said that, I was like, oh my gosh, this gets even better. My one question is, I really liked how you laid out the process. Do you happen to have a timeline that goes, that correlates with it? I mean, like, how long are we thinking this whole process, start to finish, start to implementing, is going to take?
So we are working on that timeline, and we can send a more detailed version to council, but we anticipate it to be about nine to 10 months. Again, to make sure that we have, you don't want to shortchange your engagement process, and we know that it's really important for you to have a vision that's reflective of Forest Grove, so we anticipate at least a nine-month process. So as we finalize the details for that timeline, we can share those with the council.
Cool. Any other questions, discussion, questions? Oh, councillor Valenzuela.
Thank you. Hello, Sarah. Good to see you. And thank you so much for the presentation, very detailed. It's very easy to follow, to see what's going on and what the plans are to make this a successful project. My question is, and I love having the, you know, that we're gonna have that link so we can invite people and add people to participate. Are you planning on going on, attending the farmer's market, for example, which is a great opportunity for engagement and also engagement with the Latino community?
Yes.
Is the cereal in Spanish, for example, the servais? Are those available in Spanish for people to be able to participate?
Yeah, so as we develop the tools, we certainly will, are very aware of the demographics in Forest Grove and wanting to reach the Spanish-speaking community. So we'll be able to provide translations of materials as well as working, we've found in our engagement experience, working closely with trusted partners in the community. So we've identified some stakeholders already, Core Central Cultural, Cultural, and then the Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber are a few that are on our list already. And we'll be doing some community leader interviews, again, to just understand who other organizations work with to engage the Spanish-speaking community in Forest Grove, because there's trusted relationships there, and we want to make sure that folks are engaging with those trusted partners. So we'll be building alliances with folks for helping to conduct the engagement. And then we're also working with staff on a list of, not just farmer's markets, but you guys have lots of community events that happen in the summer and really in the fall as well, but I think September was the big month. So we've, we're building out that calendar to make sure that we don't miss any of those opportunities, because we know that you guys get great attendance at those events, and we want to talk to those people. So as we get that communications and engagement strategy put together, again, that's something that we can share with the council and And if there's anything that you see that we're missing, we welcome that input to make sure that we're covering all of our bases.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I don't see any more questions. So we look forward to working with you and getting our quarterly updates and the whole process. So thanks again, Sarah. Have a nice night.
You're welcome. And be on the lookout for those links. We'll keep you posted on how the results come in.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now moving on to item F1, F meaning public hearings, ordinances and resolutions. So our first resolution tonight is number 2024-114. And we have our library director, Colleen Winters, approaching the area for her report.
Thank you. So I'm just here tonight to answer any questions you might have about any of that.
Any questions for, yes, Counselor Ewing?
Just a comment. I really appreciate that you guys went through the process of asking for a subcommittee from the council. I think you're the first that's kind of come forward with that more formal policy. And I just really want to appreciate your members for going through that process.
Thank you, Counselor Ewing.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, I don't have any. It seems really clear. So, okay. There's no questions. I will now ask for a motion.
A move that we approve resolution number 2024-14.
I second.
I second.
Council President Rippey made the motion to approve resolution number 2024-114. It was seconded by Council Martinez. I will now ask the city manager to read it by title only.
Resolution number 2024-14, establishing a subcommittee of the Public Arts Commission with the purpose of evaluating and reviewing the festival of the arts.
Thank you. Are there any discussion points from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving resolution number 2024-14, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, hearing none. Resolution number 2024-14 has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Thank you, Ms. Winters. Great, item F2, resolution 2024-06, modifying the tourism event sponsorship program. And we have Community Development Director Brian Pol.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Brian Pol, Community Development Director, before you on resolution 2024-06. We last had a work session on this on April 8th, and I think we all, or I think you all came to a, a set of agreements. This was tabled until a time date certain, which was tonight. And we have crafted the resolution to show, to reflect the comments that we had at the work session. And as you can see, we gave you some language here if you want to move to amend this to include the, the language that you decided on last time. And staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pol. Any questions from council? Seeing none. What is the wish of the council?
So moved to accept resolution 2024-06.
We need to amend, aren't we going to amend it? Or is this included?
Because it was tabled, it has to come back to you exactly as it was before you the first time. And so you will need to make those amendments to reflect the decision or the consensus of last.
Thank you for clarifying the process.
If you look under, just above current status in the staff report, or sorry, just below current status, you'll see.
So I need a second. Thank you. Resolution number 2024-06 was moved by Counselor Ewing, seconded by Counselor Marshall. Will the city manager read the resolution by title only? Is that correct or no?
Yes, I can. If the council would like to amend the resolution that was taken off the table, now would be the time to offer that amendment. So the resolution 2024-06 is now on the table. If the council would like to amend it to establish an annual cap of $12,000 and have the resolution take effect July 1st.
Would that happen in discussion, though?
Pardon?
Is that during discussion, that we would amend it or no? We'd amend it first?
So if I read the resolution, then my understanding is it would go to a vote after that and it would not.
Oh, it doesn't go to discussion and then, and then we amend it? Okay, you do it, you do it how, I have a different order, I think.
Sorry, I, I, Mariah can correct me if mistaken, but if I read the resolution, then I think the next process is, is a, is a vote, correct?
It would go to discussion, but you wouldn't make amendments during that discussion. You would make amendments before you moved, because the current motion is to adopt the resolution as is. So you would make a motion to amend it. And then with that amendment, you would make a motion to pass the resolution as amended.
Sorry, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, I'm still confused. So, so are we going to, let's amend it. Are we not, read it by title only?
I think either way it works. If you want me to read it and then have discussion on it and an amendment, that can work too. So either way is fine. I think the only clarification would be that I would have to also read the amendment after the discussion. That's all.
Okay, well, we can amend it. Are you recommending we amend it right now?
I would like to move to amend resolution 2024-06, exhibit one, to include organizations are subject to an annual cap of $12,000 in sponsorship funds. And the resolution will be in effect July 1st, 2024.
I second. Okay, Council President Rippey has made a motion to amend to include the things he listed. And Counselor Martinez has seconded that amendment. So now discussion or then we're going to vote on that amendment or read by title only? Now I'm completely confused by the.
Sorry, I think there would be.
The amendment, and then we vote on the amendment.
Great, discussion on the amendment. No discussion? All those in favor of the amended resolution number 2024, oops, dash 06, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution number 2024-06 has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero.
That was the amendment. Now we have to vote on the.
The resolution, that was just the amendment. Okay. Jeez Louise. Can I ask a question really quickly?
Please, yeah.
On the sequence for a resolution, my notes say it goes, you make a motion, you second the motion, then you ask the city manager to read the resolution by title only, then you discuss, and that's what amendments happen, right? And then you ask for the vote. Is that not the correct, or am I, I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm not going off an incorrect script?
If I remember correctly, after you do the, the motion and the second, then you get, enter into discussion.
Right, but when does the city, I have.
Then, then, once the discussion is done, then you ask the city manager to read it.
So mine says that.
Yeah, yours might be wrong. I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
So we may have competing scripts here. According to the script that I have, it's actually both. There's discussion before and after reading it. And so I think we might be.
Can we get a, can we get a resolution script that's the same for all? Because this is printed off of the.
Yeah, we can reconcile the scripts. The one I have asks if there's discussion on the motion and then I read it. But then it says that there's discussion after reading it as well. So we will reconcile the script so that this confusion is avoided in the future.
Thank you. I would appreciate it. Okay. So now there's discussion on the amended resolution. Any discussion on the amended resolution? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution number 2024-06, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
As amended, yeah.
All those opposed, same sign. The amended resolution number 2024-06 has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
That was completely confusing for me. Okay. Item F3, resolution number 2024-15, authorizing the city manager to endorse an intergovernmental agreement between the Forest Grove School District and the Forest Grove Police Department for a school resource officer. And we have our esteemed police chief, Ryman, to present.
Mayor Phil, councilors, staff is seeking this evening for authorization for the city manager to execute the school resource officer agreement with the Forest Grove School District. The current IGA with the school district expires at the end of this calendar, school calendar year. On April 22nd of this year, the school board did vote to renew the contract with the amended language changes. This again will be a one-year agreement with the school district based on workload, workload analysis that dictates what the officer should be doing and not doing in this. At this point, are there any?
Any, I have a question. When the school board approved this, is it, so I believe last year they did it one, like every year they have to approve it? Is that how we're going to continue? I'm just curious, because I was talking to Officer McBee. And I think for like our police officers, it would be nice for them to know, like, I'm in this position for three years. This is a for sure thing. I'm going to learn all these systems. I'm going to meet these people. Because they have to learn not only the city's email and calendar and all those things, but also the school districts, right? I mean, it's double, it's a, it's a dual role.
It is a dual role. Recent, it was our recommendation to the school district to do a one-year contract. They proposed a three-year contract. But based on the, the school officer's response to calls for service, we actually need a second SRO. So when we did the work analysis during the first 117 days of the school calendar, Officer Bond responded to 400 and semi calls for service. That excluded 131 calls that patrol also had to take at the school. That's not counting evening alarms, no signs, but things, those are actually calls for service. But with that said, Officer Bond couldn't engage in all the extracurricular activities from the first contract. So we scrubbed much of that language to say may versus shall and changed a lot of that language around.
Yeah.
As well as the reporting system. So again, to evaluate the contract with the changes, I opted for another one-year. But you're right, a three-year contract would be better served for both the district and the police department.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Council President Rippey?
I don't have a question, but I was, I was going to agree, I think, a three-year contract with some sort of clause in there that, you know, whether it's a, a notice by, of one semester or a notice by one month or something like that to terminate would, but it gives some stability to both entities to have a longer contract.
I would agree. I think the other unique piece to this is we will have a new superintendent.
That's, yeah, I understand.
Not sure where she stands in regards to having this SRO program at this point either.
And hopefully we'll have a new police chief, yeah.
That's, that's.
Got it.
So.
Counselor Ewing.
So what you're saying is that right now you want to do the one year because you want to go back and evaluate and get more data, but you would ultimately like it to be on a three-year schedule?
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. What is the wish of the council?
That we approve resolution number 2024-15, authorizing the city manager to endorse an intergovernmental agreement between the Forest Grove School District and the Forest Grove Police Department for a school resource officer.
Thank you. Resolution number 2024-15 was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Counselor Marshall. Will the, I'm going to use my script, so will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 2024-15, authorizing the city manager to endorse an intergovernmental agreement between the Forest Grove School District and the Forest Grove Police Department for a school resource officer.
Thank you. Discussion by council. My statements, I'm just going to echo what Chief Ryman says. My day job, I teach, and it's a good job. I like it a whole lot. But it would be, I don't know how we can make it work between the school district and the city, but we need two SROs. We need one at the high school and one at the middle school. That's how I think we get, we fix some of these things. I mean, the call volume, it's a great program. I mean, Chief Ryman did it too. He was an SRO and I see him at the market and how he interacts with people. I think it's from his training as a teacher, as an SRO. So I just think that short-term, long-term planning, we need to figure out that agreement. You know, when we talk about partnerships with the city, there's, there's always work we can do to collaborate and be more efficient at using our resources. And so I would really, really like to see us figure out how we can help them do, get two SROs. Those are my comments. Any additional comments? Okay, seeing none. Since it has to do with money, we're going to do a roll call vote, please.
Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. The Forest Grove City Council approves resolution number 2024-15 with a six to zero vote. Thank you, Chief. Up next, item F4, resolution number 2024-16. I'm dealing with GIS workflow. We have our assistant city manager, Mr. Paul Downey.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. You've got the staff report, you've read the staff report. What we're asking for is an exemption from the competitive procurement requirements to do a direct appointment for a vendor to provide GIS services to the city. And we talked about it at fair length at the budget committee meeting last week, what some of the issues are with the geographic information system and what we're going to recommend to do, to fix it is hiring a consultant to do GIS workflow and management support, managing, moving the city's GIS system to a managed cloud system, and then beginning the process to migrate the, to the new utilities network version of the GIS software from the vendor that we have. We don't feel, I mean, part of the, part of the requirements is the, maybe pop the findings real quick, is that this won't, direct appointment is unlikely to encourage favoritism. It's not. And we looked at the vendors that are in the area and there's not a lot of vendors that provide the complete scope of what we have between electric utilities and the other utilities. And so there are some out of the area vendors, but if you do that, then you start getting into cost issues. Because we, one of the things we want is some, somebody on site to help with direct management and to meet, meet in person with people. We think meeting with, meeting in person with the staff and developing those relationships is important with something like this, because we're actually going to be asking the consultant to help manage the staff's workflow. So, and if we start having to pay people to travel here, then we're going to lose, lose some of the costs. So for that reason, we're asking you as the local contractor view board to pass the resolution line as to directly hire this consultant without you going through the competitive procurement process, which will probably take two to three months, since that's two to three months longer that we're just sitting here and not getting a lot of good management support. And also some of this money is going to be spent from the, going to be spent using ARPA funds. And so it's three months of ARPA funds that I'll lose for processing, getting some of this process worked up that we need to get done. I'll take any questions the council may have.
Questions? Counselor Ewing?
I just have a comment. It was exciting to see GIS come to the community. Being a geographic person with my education, I knew the importance of GIS. And I was so excited when the council finally decided to bring this on to our community. And I think it's grown by leaps and bounds in what we're capable to do. But I also know that you really have to have a specialized knowledge of GIS. And it has to be current every single year because things change. So to put it in the hands of a consultant, that that is their goal, to be as educated and capable in that particular field, I think this is a good move for us.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Downey? Seeing none. What is the wish of the council?
I move that we approve resolution number 2024-16.
I second. Thank you. Resolution number 2024-16 was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Counselor Martinez. Will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 20.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, approving direct award of contract for GIS workflow and management support, managed cloud GIS system and utility network migration.
Thank you. Discussion by council. Okay, hearing none. Again, this is a money issue, so I'm going to ask the city recorder for a roll call vote, please.
Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Councilor Martinez?
Yes.
Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution number two zero two four dash one six is formally approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a six to zero vote. Thank you, Mr. Downey. We are now moving on to item G, which is council communications. We will start with Council President Rippey.
Thank you. The EDC did meet on Thursday, May ninth, and among the discussion items were the upcoming, our reviews of the economic opportunities analysis, which I believe is in progress, I think that's being in, done. The Economic Development Strategic Plan will follow that analysis, so that is also one of the goals that, or objectives that we had placed on economic development. And the final area they discussed was the building improvements program. There have been a number of applications, and we had asked EDC to review those with the matrix that Miles came up with. The Fire Services Task Force will finally be meeting again this Wednesday evening, so I'll be in attendance at that. And finally, the chamber retreat was moved to June seventeenth, which is, I will be able to attend that. So, just wanted to update you on that, that they're going to have their annual retreat on the seventeenth of June. That's all I have.
Thank you, Council President. Next up, hang on, I started doing too many things. Council Gutsden is absent, so we're going to go to Council Marshall.
Um, I have nothing to report. Both meetings are Wednesday. I will have more to report next week.
Thank you. Councilor Martinez.
Okay, so I did not make it to the Forest Grove Rural Fire Department meeting. My husband and I have been attending the Community Academy, it's been being held here at the auditorium, and it's been excellent. I would recommend everybody go to find out what our police department has to work through on a daily basis. It's been a very good, the officers have been very engaging and involved in, in the information that we've been learning about, so. And then I attended the Sister City Committee meeting the end of April, is it, I don't think I have gone over that. Real quickly, it looks like the student delegation with probably two adults will be here October twenty-eighth to November first. We will, and we're starting to, we'll be starting to plan for that. We don't know at this point if the mayor will be able to attend at that time, we're hoping that that will be the case. So, and Joyce Phillips, the staff liaison, has been working with the committee to make sure that we get that information before the next meeting.
What were those dates again?
October twenty-eighth to November first. Okay, that's about all I have right now.
Great, thank you. Um, Councilor Ewing.
Uh, yes, so CCE has been moved till tomorrow due to different calendar issues, so we're going to be meeting tomorrow in the small conference room. There's another event with historic landmarks. What other event is here tomorrow night? Does anybody know? Because they've reserved the auditorium, so I thought, anyway, it doesn't matter, we'll be meeting in the small conference room. Also, we will be meeting with the senior center and community center in another week, I believe. So I don't really have anything at this point in time to share further than that. I just would like to make a comment that I want to make sure as we go forward with the 2040 plan, and we're doing that engagement piece, I want to really make sure that CCE is involved, that they're being given opportunities to learn how to engage, so I don't want them to miss that piece so that they can support us going forward. So just kind of a FYI, that I really hope that we'll be able to be more active with the consultants as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ewing. Councilor Valenzuela.
Thank you, mayor. I did not make it to the last meeting for the library commission, and the policy advisory board has canceled May's meeting, we didn't have any action items, but we will meet virtually in the month of June and July, and then in August, we will have our in-person meeting to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the Community Development Block Grant. So that could be an event to be looking forward to, but that's, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to our city manager reports. Mr. Vander Zanen?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Just a few things, we're working with Pacific University intern in Clean Water Services on a student capstone project that's highlighting the importance of a swale, that's some interpretive signage that will be installed at Stites Park, so look for that in the near future. Also, kudos to Ann Lane, our Parks and Rec Director, she applied for three different grants for the Loop Trail and Kyle Park, and was successful in receiving all three of them from Metro. There were a hundred and eighteen projects that were submitted, twelve were selected, and Forest Grove got three out of the twelve, so, yeah. Great job to Ann. Couple things coming up, barbecue with the Blue, the police department is hosting, is June eighth at Rogers Park. And the city commenced an access management plan for East TV Highway, this is being funded by ODOT. This will kind of augment the TV Highway Safety Improvements Plan. It's strictly about access management, it's not necessarily about improvements like the highway safety plan was, but it will also inform what some of those safety improvements may be. That started. The water SDC rate study has commenced. That study will normally take anywhere from three to four months, and then we'll bring the results back to the city council regarding the water SDC. The budget committee is meeting next Tuesday to discuss mayor and councillor compensation. City staff provided the budget committee with the comparison sheet and sent that out to them in advance of the meeting, so that will be one week from today. And then last, but certainly not least, the book sale is going on this Thursday through Saturday at the library during the regular library hours, so it'll start at nine-thirty on Thursday morning, and will go through Saturday. With that, that's all I have. Thank you, mayor.
Great, thank you.
Can I question clarification to that budget meeting? Is that just, is that the entire budget meeting?
That's, that's just the resident members of the budget commission, it does not include the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my mayor's report, I'm going to skip my HLB Historic Landmarks Board report because we've received the presentation that highlighted a lot of the things I was going to talk about. So on April twenty-seventh, I attended with, Council President Rippey was, was there as well, the Habitat for Humanity Gala. On May fourth, the chamber hosted their second wine walk, which was a good success, and then also the Indigenous Student Union at Pacific University hosted their first pow-wow on campus, and that was well received as well. On Thursday, May ninth, I had my first meeting with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, so six people attended out of the ten or eleven that have accepted. Some things they talked about, we are going to be at the market on June fifth to recruit for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council to get more people involved. We received a presentation from representatives of ASB about a move app that they're using to increase community engagement, and they were able to connect it to our goals of community engagement and DEI. So we're going to vet using that, if there's a, a place for the MYAC to help connect students of that age group with community events. And then there is discussion of partnering with Pacific's MMC to do a voter registration drive at the high school next fall. And so those are some of the things that we were talking about. We'll get chairs and positions at the next meeting, but it's really exciting to be building that program out again, so if there's something you have, an idea that you would like me to take back to them, please let me know. On Saturday at nine AM, I attended, the county hosted the ribbon cutting at Martin Road, state reps were there, Region Two was there, and Commissioner Willie was there. So that's a good, very successful project, and I look forward to continuing to work with them on the Fern Hill intersection in the next coming years. Uh, today, so what I really want to spend most of my time discussing, and I want some feedback from you before I schedule a meeting with Metro President Lynn Peterson, there is a stakeholder group from Metro meeting to discuss the supportive housing bond, and they want to, I mean, it just seems they want to try to reconfigure it and take some sort of recommendation to the voters because they want money for affordable housing. And this really hasn't gone out to cities, they haven't had any sort of community engagement. I had heard rumblings about this, and that's why I helped write an editorial. It's year three of this bond, we're actually seeing huge growth with the county. It's working in Washington County, I would say. Some notes, just out of statistics, right, is that we're able, you know, the goals were case management, sheltering, and housing, and in 2021, there was twelve case managers, there's a hundred and forty-four. There were forty-nine shelters, there's now four hundred and twenty-six, right? Housing was seven hundred and seventy-five, there's now two thousand five hundred and ten. So, my initial response is like, whoa, 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 we're only on year three, let's, like, we're doing good work, and this need we have to address homelessness isn't going away. So, my understanding is that the only way to engage Metro on this is to reach out to Lynn Peterson and make a meeting, and then tell, and then communicate where Forest Grove's positions on this. I would like to do that, but I wanted to make sure I had counsel, that we're, I'm giving the message of the council to Metro. My understanding is, is that the COO is going to recommend what they're going to do in July, and that their, the referral date or recommendation, that they want it to go to the ballot in November. So, it's a very, it seems very rushed by Metro, and it seems like there's not a lot than, you know, in the, in the presentation I received today, and I thought this was very telling, all three counties are in agreement that this is not a good idea, and they're telling Metro this, but yet Metro's only invited Chair Harrington and Beaverton Mayor Beatty to the table for these meetings. So, if I can get consensus from council, I would like to schedule a meeting, I mean, and to explain the importance of having these funds through the county for the city of Forest Grove. I mean, we have the collaboration, you know, we've had success in the last year of offering services, and right now we do have enough shelter beds that are time, place, and manner that we're not even using it. So, I'm just curious of how the council feels about that. Go ahead, Councilor Ewing.
So, this has been a huge, huge move forward in the past three years, and I'm really proud of what particularly Washington County's team has done to move this forward, but there has been concern in the limitations that were put on that by Metro, in that we're really, we're doing housing, we're doing homelessness, but really a larger discussion was, how do we keep people safely in their home? Because this doesn't address that, because the only things those dollars can currently be used for is really homelessness. It doesn't address those other big issues, buying land or, you know, land for affordable housing, keeping people in their homes through repair. So I understand that they're trying to address those, but I feel it's too rushed. I do not feel that there's been a real vetting, as you said, almost none of the cities have really been involved in that discussion, and I think it's critical that we're at the table with that discussion. But yes, I do tend to find that when things are rushed at that level, they're not well thought out, and then when it comes down to our level, we have to figure out the funding, the details, and all of the infrastructure that wasn't included. So, I would hope we would be at the table.
Any further comments?
I'd, I'd agree. Metro has a history of rushing things, and they have a history of not having a lot of details thought out ahead of time. And as our experience was with the SHS funds, there were so many questions, and people used to love to say, well, we're building the plane while we're flying, that's not a way to do business. And so, there are so many questions about wraparound services, keeping people in their homes, the wraparound services in particular are very concerning, because I've heard nothing about whether or not we have sufficient mental health resources. We have caseworkers, we have, we have, we have people working on outreach, we have housing specialists, but the, the, the decision was made to not, to rely on private companies that do mental health, and I'm not sure that there are sufficient numbers of those companies with their assets to handle the, the issues that we're facing. So, there's a lot of question, and I do, and I agree, we need to be at the table, and Metro needs to, to slow down and listen to what we're, what our concerns are.
Okay. We're good?
I agree.
Okay, cool. Thank you. So that's all I have, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and then we have two executive sessions. Okay. Meeting adjourned.